Take your seats. Again, the school board meeting will begin in one minute.
The April twenty eighth, twenty twenty meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. We have our model read by by Sharon Thor.
We are the Marion County Leadership Team. If we chose one word to describe us, it would be student-centered because student success is our mission. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and relevant. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, diverse, and dynamic. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality and clarify expectations, and get better. We do not accept excuses. We will not accept mediocrity. We will always put students first, and we will leave a legacy of success.
Later in the meeting, up to thirty minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning operation of the Marion County School System or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the table in the hallway. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a line green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than five forty P. M. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Nancy Stacy, District One. Mrs. Beth McCall, District Two.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District Five.
Yeah.
Mrs. Nancy Thor, District Four.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District Three.
Here.
Dr. Heidi Mayer, Superintendent.
Here.
Ms. Suzanne Green, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Please stand for our pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I recommend approval of the agenda for the April twenty eighth, twenty twenty school board meeting with materials in the board packet, those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
Moved.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the March tenth, twenty twenty school board? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I went too fast.
[laughing].
It was moved by Ms. Thor, seconded by Ms. Call. I must be in a rush. Uh, any question? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the March tenth, twenty twenty school board meeting?
Moved.
Moved by Ms. Thor, seconded by Ms. King. Are there any additions or corrections to the minute? There being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the March sixteenth, twenty twenty emergency school board meeting?
Moved.
Moved by Ms. McCall.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Thor. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? There being none in discussion, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
I'll now ask the school board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board tonight.
In compliance with Section two eight six point zero one one four Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter related to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the hallway. Public speaker forums are also located on the same table. The completed forums are due to the school board secretary no later than five forty P. Tonight, speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order of receipt by the school board secretary. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address for the record and spell your last name. Speakers will have five minutes of time. If, however, there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to others. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. No verbal attacks and profanity are allowed. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, Item Six, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless the statement is provided twenty-four hour in advance. If there are matters dealing with student discipline to include expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families is also strictly prohibited. Thank you for your attention.
Ms. Elena Martinez, Martinez, are there any?
No, no, sir.
Okay, good. May I have a motion to adopt the new charter school application, Aina A. Colon Academy to open August twenty twenty-two? Moved by Ms. King.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. McCall.
The new charter school application complies with Florida Statute one zero zero two point three-three and will be known as Aina A. Colon Academy. It's scheduled to open August twenty twenty-two.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the new charter school application? There being none? Any discussion on this? Need to vote on that one? We need to vote on that?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. May I have a motion to adopt the African American History Community Advisory Team?
Oh, so moved?
Moved by Ms. Thor, seconded by Ms. McCall.
The committee members and procedures for the African American History Community Advisory Team complies with board policy and Florida statutes.
I declare a public hearing. I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the committee members and procedures for the African American History Community Advisory Team? Any discussion? For the record, can we go ahead and put those names, um, enter those names into the record orally, um, for that African American Advisory Committee? I'll go ahead and read them. For District, um, I won't read the districts. You have, um, recommended Nicholas Williams, Anievette Moreno, Frank Raspberry, and Nadia Raspberry, Cynthia Graham, Angie Rivera, Colonel Gorm Black the Third, Amira Sims, and Ms. Norbella Haines and Tichay Jackson. All ready for vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda items C seven point one through C thirteen point one?
Aye.
Moved by Ms. McCall. Seconded by Ms. King. No discussion, all in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. May I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donation that have a total value of five thousand six hundred fifty-one dollars. One thousand five hundred dollars to Donnellan High School from the Murgridge Family Foundation S. S. F. Four thousand one hundred fifty-one dollars to Fort McCoy School from Cactus Jacks Two Incorporated. Any motion?
Moved.
Moved by Ms. McCall.
Yeah.
Seconded by Ms. Thor, any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Ms. McCall, can you take them?
Absolutely. Thank, um, thank the Murgridge Family and Cactus Jacks Two, um, for your support of our schools. Although we are doing school virtually, we still very much are in need of things, and your extra dollars certainly help us, um, get those things. So, thank you for your continued support of our students.
Thank you. Um, board committee reports, um, couple reminders. Uh, two special school board meetings are scheduled for April thirtieth, twenty twenty at nine A. M. and May fifth, twenty twenty at nine A. M. The purposes of the emergency school board meetings are to discuss COVID nineteen updates. The next regular administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for May seventh, twenty twenty at nine o'clock A. M. The purpose of the work sessions is to discuss board concerns, board membership dues, school start times, district staffing plan, review of the final charter renewal contract, comprehensive mental health plan, code of conduct, and male detectives presentation. The following administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for May twenty-first, twenty twenty at nine o'clock A. M. The purpose of the work session is to discuss twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one general insurance renewal review, new charter school contract review, twenty twenty-one health insurance update, and code of student conduct. Uh, Dr. Mayor, any?
Thank you, Reverend Chair. Uh, we want to say thank you to Ocala Police Officer, Officer Hunt. He's in the lobby, he's with us this evening, and, um, I'm sure you all remember Officer Hunt because we all kind of grew up with, with his youngest. Um, and we were talking outside, they've adopted two hamsters, so I learned all about the hamsters and what the kids are doing with the hamsters, and, and, uh, his older boy will be attending VPK this year, so we hope that they choose one of our schools. So, thank you again, Officer Hunt, it's always good to see you. Uh, we have many updates for the board this Thursday at the special board meeting, but so tonight we have just a few. Another thank you, a huge thank you to the city of Ocala and Mr. Poole for the, um, helping us with the, the internet at many of our schools, that has made such a difference to so many people, so a huge thank you to Mr. Poole and the city of Ocala. And as of today, uh, we have delivered to our community two hundred forty-six thousand nine hundred twenty-five total meals. That's almost a quarter of a million meals that have been delivered to our community, and that's all been done by about a hundred and fifty people. That's amazing, that is just amazing. And so, it's serendipitous, I think, that this Friday, May first, is School Lunch Hero Day. It's National School Lunch Hero Day, and oh my gosh, what a day to celebrate these folks who are taking care of our community. So, we thank them tonight, we thank them always, we continue to applaud our teachers who are going above and beyond, our families who, who are staying connected and the community supporting us, so we thank you all, and again, we'll have more detailed and in-depth updates this Thursday. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Mayor. Um, Attorney Green?
Nothing, thank you.
Ms. Elena Martinez?
Thank you.
Ms. McCall?
Yes, um, this morning, we had, uh, the Public Education Foundation Board Meeting and Zoom, uh, and it was, actually, it was go-to meeting, uh, and it was a very good board meeting, and I wanted you all to know that, of course, next week is teacher appreciation, and the foundation on May the sixth and May the seventh are doing what they're calling pop and drop. And so, teachers need things at home, they ran into their classrooms, they got the things that they thought they would need, their books, their computers, but there were little things like Post-it notes, plenty of pens, markers, those types of things that they have found that they truly need, and so, the foundation will be doing a pop and drop, they can drive their cars up, pop open their trunks, and we'll dump in, um, uh, things for them to say, thank you so much for all that, that they are doing, uh, for our kids. So, we're pretty excited about our pop and drop. They're take stock in children, mentors are meeting with their students on Zoom, they're having phone calls, um, all of the students are being touched, if they need extra tutoring, they're getting the tutoring, so things are going very well with our take stock in children, uh, youth, and you know, many of them are at our at-risk youth, and so, they are handling the situation, getting their work done. Uh, we had one young lady that we could not find, um, and learned that she was working at Walmart, so my daughter ran out to Walmart, she, because she can now work full-time, so her school was taking a backseat because her family needs the money.
Oh, wow.
So, um, anyway, they're working on that, the mentors with the young lady, so they are working really hard, and she understands that her schoolwork needs to take place. So, lots of good news from the Ed Foundation. And I just want to give a shout out, um, to all of the people that did food drives last week and began the drop-off, and I know I'm going to leave somebody out, these are the ones that have, that contacted me, um, that were doing the food drives. So, Nancy Thrower's community, Ocala Palms, did a big drive, uh, and, uh, delivered, I believe, last week or yesterday?
Last week.
Last week. Um, uh, I was contacted by Sandy Watts, one of our retired teachers, and she contacted the teachers' sorority, Alpha Delta Kappa, they did a drive and did their drop-off yesterday morning, so thank you, Alpha Delta Kappa. Um, my community, Country Club of Ocala, did a tremendous food drive, and we dropped everything off today. Suzanne Green and family did a tremendous drive, the First United Methodist Church. Uh, Reverend Cummings really put out the charge, and yesterday, they delivered over four thousand pounds of food. I believe you had a caravan going, didn't you, Reverend Cummings?
Did, yeah.
So, thank you so much. Crystal McCall Realty had a food drive going, and they delivered yesterday and today. And a special thanks to Mike and Patty Conrad, uh, and Paige Branson, who is one of our speech and hearing pathologists, for their Faith Over Fear campaign that they started in our community, and all of the money from those signs went to Interfaith. So, and I know there are many more going on, these are the ones that I absolutely knew about. Um, so, our Foods for Kids is, um, is ramping back up. We will not deliver this week, but next week on Wednesday, April the sixth, Mr. Ellers and I have already been in touch, so the backpack program will be delivered to our outlined schools like it was before, because even though people are doing tremendous food drives, as long as this lasts, there's going to be a food shortage at Interfaith. So, um, they, uh, will be delivered on April the sixth, and so, working with Mr. Ellers on that.
May sixth.
I'm sorry, May, yes, May sixth, so sorry, so not this week, but the next week. Those principals have already, uh, been contacted, um, so we're thrilled. I want to thank Chaney Brothers again for stepping up and meeting with, uh, Ms. Grimsley, and so she could purchase bulk food. She has had a tremendous amount of cash donations, just nowhere to purchase bulk food, so, um, anyway, thank you so much to everybody who continues to make this, um, very special. You know, every time we have a need in Marion County, people always step up, that is the great thing about our county. So, thank you to everyone that has helped Interfaith, helped our Food for Kids program and all of our community, uh, food banks, so thank you. That's all, Reverend Cummings.
Thank you. And Ms. Stacy?
Yes. Seems like I'm always the one that gets to the nitty-gritty. We have not had a school board attorney for a long time, and we, um, we've done a contract attorney, and, and Ms. Green's been absolutely fantastic. But, um, we have a legal department. Our board policy, when we took on this project, to have an inside attorney, that when the attorney left, we would start, very quickly start advertising. We have a new superintendent coming, and, um, we just don't need all the tentacles hanging out there unattached, we need, we need to get some things in place because she will be also using our attorney, since it's an appointed superintendent, she'll be using it a lot, she'll have her own attorney at some point, but she will need some guidance and some things along, that we will need someone in that office. It's hard because, I know, I've wanted to go and discuss things before, and having a contract attorney is just not the same, it goes kind of back the way it was when we had one before, because I was on the board when we had one before, and, um, and it's kind of unfair to the contract attorney because we call and go, I gotta talk to you right now, but she's got things that she's doing right now, too, because she has her business that she's running. So, we need to really seriously, very quickly start getting some discussion, like a workshop as quickly as possible, we need to start some dialogue on that. The girls in the legal department need some guidance, it's kind of been running itself over there, but there's some times, there's, there's some things that have happened over the last couple of months that I've seen the wheels start to come off a little bit, as Mr. James used to say, and it's time to get that department all squared away, so there's somebody in charge, running it, um, because, you know, for right now, Reverend Cummings, you've done a good job, you know, kind of the chair and trying to keep it going, you know, from the chair's position, but the school board chair shouldn't be kind of running the school board legal department, it should be run by an attorney. And so, I'd like to see if anybody else has any interest in following the school board policy and getting that started. How do y'all feel?
Well, we had talked about, I may be wrong, but I thought our discussion was that we really wanted to wait until the new superintendent, so that person would have input into who that attorney is, so they have to work directly with them on so many things.
This is the school board's attorney.
Correct.
Superintendent will have their representation also. We can't put everything off until mañana, we need to get some things in place, the school board policy calls for us to do this.
And I don't disagree, but we did have that discussion.
Well, we've, we've kind, well, I understood that we're gonna kind of wait until we got this, we, we, we were already advertising for applicants to, for the superintendent, and it would have gotten the legal office quite busy having applicants for this and applicants, two searches going on at the same time. Um, I think that we need to have someone in place, and, um, I think that we five can choose that person, and I'm sure that the superintendent, we chose the superintendent, I think she'll be happy with the attorney that we choose also, because after all, it is this board's attorney. And, um, yes, they will also be advising her if she, you know, that, that's the, the nice thing about the appointed superintendent, because it's, it's just a whole different relationship, but still, there'll be, she will have her own legal representation also. Um, it for, you know, we know why, with all the school employee terminations and stuff, that she, she will have her own representation, but, um, we need to get on with this. This is something that's, needs to be put on the burner and, and taken care of, so we've got something in place instead of, because the legal department, got two people over there trying to run it, and they tell me how wonderful Ms. Green is about coming in whenever they need her and everything, but there's just times when, even during the search, it was hard for me, when I would call one person and ask a question, well, they didn't have the paperwork, I'd call Ms. Green, and she didn't have the paperwork, to have to get it from, like, different people in the department had it, it's, I've run a business way too long, I see the wheels coming off our legal department, and we need to get it back under control.
Any other comments on that one?
You already get it done? How do you feel, Nancy?
I agree that we need to move it closer to the front burner, after all, our board policy dictates that, and an interim person is an interim person, it's not supposed to be a forever thing, sadly. I very much appreciate your availability, and, and when you have your own business and you're having to juggle a lot of hats, I think that you have really done and continue to do that admirably, so I, thank you. Um, but you're right, you know, we, we need to follow board policy, it's been on and off my mind, um, so I think it is important to, to begin the process. I like the idea, even though a superintendent has their own attorney, we definitely want to do everything we can to, to facilitate putting together a really strong team, so timing is, is important, and we are definitely in unique, in, in a unique situation this go-round, you know, with having had a lot of other things to work on, so hopefully, uh, we'll get a little grace for that, not having jumped on this right away, which, in my opinion, likely would have been preemptive. So, I, I agree that we probably need to start advertising and getting the wheels in motion, I don't feel a huge sense of, of urgency, um, but at the same time, we need to be following our policy and, and always moving forward.
And even if we got it down to the final interview-type process, and the new superintendent was here and wanted to sit in with the interviews and that sort of thing, and maybe give some input or something, but we would have it ready, wrapped up, ready to go, and so, someone could be in that office over there, because when she gets here, she's gonna be stepping into that legal office, and she's gonna, she's gonna need some guidance over there, and she's gonna need some stuff, and we need to have someone there, um, because two secretaries have done a great job, but their expertise only goes so far, and, um, and it's not really fair to ask them to do what they're doing over there. It's really not, because we put them in a, a situation where there's not really a person, quote, "running" the legal department, and you can't have a department in an institution like this where you don't really have anybody in charge. And so, um, we really need, for their sake, and the district's sake, and the new superintendent, when she comes, have someone, she wants to come in and be in on the interviews and, and maybe add her input, that's fine, but we need to have it ready for her, because to bring her in and then start doing interviews and start advertising, we're gonna have enough issues come fall after having schools shut down for a couple of months, that, that's gonna keep us, that's gonna keep the new superintendent quite busy without confusion in the legal department, too.
And thank goodness for Terry and Cashela.
They're, but they're.
So much experience.
But I think they're getting tired.
Well, yes.
I think they're getting tired.
Been a lot going on.
Well, well, Ms. Green has been, Attorney Green has, I don't want anyone to think that Cashela and Terry are running the department, they're not. Ms. Green has been running the department. Cashela and Terry are, are working under the orders of Ms. Green or anything that, um, Ms. Green gets from me, I don't want the public or anybody to think that we have to, because that's not the case.
Well, that's not the case, but.
But, I mean, they have been doing some, they're doing some things.
Have an attorney on staff.
Right.
That's what our board policy says we will do. We've gone through the contract attorney before, it, many reasons we needed to move away from that.
And let me ask this question, can we go ahead and bring this to a workshop and have some more discussion on it, some?
That would be fine, that's what I asked for.
Can we do that, you're in agreement?
Yeah, oh, no, I am in agreement, um, and, because I was gonna bring something to your attention, because I was the chair when, um, we brought in Attorney Gibbs, so I'm a little familiar with that and could lead you, but I'll just wait till that, um,
Thank you.
Workshop day.
Because I think there's a, a, there was a, an order on how you went about getting that, and that's the thing I want to, us to discuss and look at.
Oh, definitely, we need a workshop, that's what I opened my mouth asking for.
Yes.
We're in agreement?
I was the interim then, so.
Actually, Ms. Green, I can weigh that.
I'm happy, I know.
She's gonna retire as an interim sometime, coming back and forth, it's nice having you.
I'm, I'm happy to get that process together and.
So, um, let's try to move that to a, a work session within the next couple of weeks. Will that work?
Maybe get started on it.
Yeah, okay. Anything else, Ms. Stacy?
That's it, thank you.
Ms. King?
I only have one housekeeping, um, item, and that is, I did speak with, uh, Mr. Albright, and he did have a suggestion of maybe meeting with, um, Teresa and Alice, so I need to ask Dr. Mayor if I could have permission to set up that meeting with Mr. Albright, and then we, then we can move forward from there.
Certainly, yeah, Teresa's listening, so, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Thor?
Just my thoughts, and, and crisis brings people together, and that's what keeps going through my mind when, the, the tough parts of, of dealing with this COVID nineteen crisis, what I try to keep in the front of my mind is, when everyone is going through a shared experience in their own unique ways, certainly, some people have been tremendously adversely affected, and, and others, you know, not so much, but it becomes our common denominator, and I continue to be very proud of, of our community. And I continue to be very proud of our community. And there's no way, every time that we're able to talk about it, to thank the breadth and depth of the folks that have stepped up in so many unique ways. And teachers, you know, we talk about them, you know, getting back to work. You know, we all want to get back to work. But when I say that, I think about that as the physical place, because the work has continued. And it hasn't just continued, it has expanded. And that's the other thing that happens during a crisis. Crisis often inspires creativity and new ways of thinking, new ways of working, new ways of doing things. It opens up possibilities that we never would've thought about or even entertained trying. So, there are all kinds of positive things that continue to happen in our community. And it's important to keep celebrating that, because this has been a grind, you know? And the longer it continues, the harder it can become. And it sort of begins to take on a life of its own. And people want answers now, you know? They really want to know, you know, what's gonna happen? What's next year gonna look like? And all I can do is what I encourage myself to do, which is, you know, stay patient and continue to surround yourself with good people. And do something, do something for someone else. Every single opportunity that you get, even if it's an encouraging word. And we're going to emerge from this twice as strong. Because that's the way it seems to happen through history, when people and societies go through things. They learn from it and they get stronger. So, again, just so many thanks to so many people. And I'm shifting gears quickly now to the African-American History Community Advisory Team. That is so exciting. And yes, it's the law. And we're doing it. And since that all started to come about, I've started to notice more figures in society. And I didn't know that Jackie Robinson, he's certainly made enough of a contribution. And most of us know his story. But did any of us know that he served in World War II? And he was an accomplished horseman?
Yeah.
Yeah, he was in the cavalry. So, there's always an opportunity to learn more and do more and be more and be grateful. So, that's what I'm feeling tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thoreau. I too, thank you, Ms. Stacy, for bringing that up about the attorney. I want to tell Ms. Green, Ms. Green has got, we've gotten so close, because we're always on the phone. So, I do want to tell Ms. Green, thank you for the work that she's doing. But I also want to let the two ladies in our legal department, Terry and Keshla, know that we appreciate everything that they're doing and how they are navigating this. This time, they're doing some amazing things. But I just don't want to relegate it down just to two or three people. Our whole district has been doing some amazing, amazing, amazing things. And it has, it has, it has been historical. When I, I look at, I looked at this food drive that Ms. McCall charged us to do, challenged us to do. And when you see people coming together, and they're not concerned about ideologies, they're not concerned about denominations, or race, or anything like that, they're just doing it because people need help. That's the best, that's when you see the best of our community. That's when you see us being the panacea, that place that everybody wants to get to. And I was, I was just amazed at what I saw yesterday. I had the opportunity to go through the Interfaith Warehouse. And I went back in the back where the other work goes. We oftentimes just see the stuff on the outside. We don't see the stuff that's in the back where people are packing up Pampers. And not only food, Pampers and things like that, household goods. Dog food, exactly. All of those types of things for families. So, I had the opportunity to see that and see them. And I got the opportunity, I guess I was the chaplain for the day yesterday, because I got to get the prayer requests. And I, as a pastor, I got a chance to look at their prayer requests. But then I got a chance to see the board where, it's called Answered Prayers. And there were so many notes on the board where people's prayers have been answered through Interfaith of finding a home or just being able to have a meal. So, those things are important. But then after that, later on, after the drop-offs, I had the opportunity to come back, drive back through there, just to see how things were going. And it was touching, because I saw a line of people in cars lined up down the road and around the block down toward Howard Academy and back out to 40, where there is a great need in our community. And yes, we delivered a lot of stuff, all of us did. But I can tell you that the food drive needs to continue. We need to continue to collect, because it will be exhausted quickly. Just seeing the number of people that was there yesterday, it is, it's amazing. But we're in that, we're in that season. And I know that the citizens of Marion County will help us get through this season, through their generosity and through their concern. We're gonna get through these hard times. But then I also want to thank those, our staff. We have some amazing teachers. We have some amazing district personnel, some amazing parents. And we just have some amazing staff around Marion County that go over and beyond the Call of Duty they are. They're contributing as well to the food drives. They're doing things, they're on the phone beyond their working hours to make sure kids are getting their lesson, checking kids out, just as I haven't heard from them in a minute. I need to hear, hear their voices. That's, that's, that's true genuine concern about these kids. But there's a special group of folk that I really have to give them a shout-out tonight. And that's, that's our food service department, our transportation department, because they have been non-stop since this started. They have been on the go ever since this started. Ms. Thoreau and her staff, Ms. Johnson and her staff, they have been feeding these kids. It was 246,925 meals since this started. That is an awesome job. And then, for this Friday to be Food Service Hero Night or Day, we have to celebrate them. And we have to tell them, "Thank you." Because they could've stayed home. They could've, they could've said, "I'm not coming in. I'm gonna just..." But because out of their concern and love for what they do with the kids, that they're, and the need that they see, they made it their way to come out and take care of these kids. So, I want to thank them personally. And personally, for me, something is coming down the, around the road for them, because I just have to do something to acknowledge what they're doing, because they are doing a tremendous job. And oftentimes, oftentimes, when we look at the movie, when we look at a movie, when we look at a movie, we know who the star is. We know who the co-star is. But we forget about the supporting cast. And these are our supporting cast members. They're the ones that's holding it together. They're the ones that are making it work. They're the ones that still have the wheels turning. So, I just want to celebrate them and tell them again, "Thank you for all that they're doing." And keep up the good work.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd also like to thank Dr. Mayor. She too has, as the district administrators and everybody pulled together and did what they need to do. I haven't seen her doing a lot of loafing.
Oh, no.
I've seen her quite busy. So, thank you, Dr. Mayor, for helping us get through this. We appreciate it.
Yes, yes. That's, that's the team. That's the team. And we have to tell people, my parents always told me, "When people do good things and do right things, you at least tell them, 'Thank you.'" So, to Dr. Mayor, to the district staff, to all of our teachers, everyone, thank you. I can't express it enough. If I said it 10,000 times, it still would not be enough to tell you guys, "Thank you." And keep, keep doing what we're doing. We're gonna get through this. We'll get through this. And I heard some great news from parents. They were just excited to hear about our plans for graduation. I'm looking forward to hearing the update on this week about how we're gonna make that happen. But it was just good news to hear. And people, sometimes people don't understand how important graduation really, really, really is. And Marion County, you guys are in a unique, we're in a unique situation. My daughter, I say this all the time, my youngest daughter is a senior at Florida A&amp;M. She's, she would be graduating this Saturday on the 2nd. However, graduation, the traditional graduation is not going to happen. They're gonna do something virtually and, you know, pitch across the screen and all that kind of stuff. And I had a conversation with her, and it bothered her, because she's graduating with honors, with a biology degree. And here it is, she's saying, "Dad, you know, I've worked so hard, and I don't feel like I'm, it's really a graduation."
So, I can get to close it out, right?
Right. So, we have to understand how important these things are to these kids and then make sure that things happen for them.
But she has a job? I think.
I'm not sure she's ready to go teach yet, but she would, she would definitely, she's gonna need a job.
Oh, come on. Hard to come on. We need those biology teachers. Come on.
But graduation is important for kids. And all of us went through, some of us have gone through more than one. And everyone meant something. So, we just want to be, celebrate these kids. And I'm excited to see how it's going to look. It's gonna be different, but I'm definitely excited to see how it's gonna look. So, thank you to Mr. McAtire and the team, everybody that came up with the suggestions to all the principals. So, stay tuned and see what's coming. We're looking forward to see what's gonna happen with that. And with that, that's, that's the end of my comments for tonight. Ms. Martinez Lopez, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
No, sir.
Good. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD 20155E, JD 20157, JD 20158, and JD 20159 with educational services through the remainder of the 2019, 2020 school year and all of the 2020, 2021 school year?
Amen.
Move by Ms. McCall. Second by Ms. King. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. May I have a motion to approve expulsion of student JD 2141 and JD 2156 with online educational services through the remainder of the 2019, 2020 school year and all of the 2020, 2021 school year?
Amen.
Move by Ms. Thoreau.
Second.
Second by Ms. McCall. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn? Move by Ms. King.
Okay.
Second by Ms. McCall. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at 6:12 PM.